We'll call the order, the Board of Commissioners meeting for Douglas County, Nebraska, today, Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge. We'll start with our Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First items of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, and B, a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of amended property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions, Resolution C through E, which we could take in block and also combine with adjournment if desired. Motion to approve and adjourn by Rogers, second by Morgan. We have a question by Commissioner Kavanaugh.
This is on C, correct?
Uh, C through E, any item?
Yep. Right. And I don't know if Mr. Goodwilly could shed some light on this. We have a whole series of properties here for action on reasons that seem to be parcels sold by the city or parcels sold by the Omaha Housing Authority that need value for 2024. Could you tell us how that process goes forward?
It's, it's pretty simple. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor Register of Deeds Office Commissioner, it's pretty simple. For the most part, parcels owned by the state or its political subdivisions, like cities or even housing authorities, are exempt from property taxes.
Right.
When those entities sell that exempt property to somebody that isn't exempt or isn't doing something that's exempt with it, then that property gets a value, then that property gets a value for tax purposes.
Right.
So at some point during the course of the year, these properties all were exempt, they all sold to somebody, they come on the tax rolls, they get a value.
Right. I guess my question is, you know, with all the other properties that we appraised during this period of time, these properties would have come on the tax rolls at various dates, not all on the same date, right?
They, they all would have sold at various points throughout the year.
Right.
And it's kind of a workload function. You get a bunch of these and you do them and it tends to be easier to send them up in bulk. And as long as we get it done before tax billing, it is really good enough.
So these are just procedurally kept as a separate category of properties and presented to us all at once?
Sure, sure. When, when, when one of these, when one of these governmental properties sells, it, it will go to our appraisal shop for a value. And then ultimately, rather than sending one or two at a time, we'll send them to
And I get this a lot, I'm sure you do too. If all of these properties have sold in the recent past, why isn't that their value?
Well, because sometimes when properties sell from government entities, it's not really an arms-length, exclusive marketplace sale. And second, state law doesn't let us move properties and sell at crisis automatically. We're supposed to look at what we think the value would be in the marketplace and an arms-length transaction, which can be really valuable.
And a willing seller.
So these properties will receive a valuation, you say, before the tax bills go out, is that right?
You, you bet.
Okay. And when would that be?
Actually, they're getting a value today if you approve the resolution, and then the billing happens in December.
Oh, so there has been a value set on these?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So the action would be just to formalize their status?
Exactly, because by state law, after the end of March, an assessment office cannot unilaterally add or change value on its own. It always has to go through the County Board of Equalization. So as these things get sold throughout the year and they have to get a value, we've got to bring it to you folks. We can't just flip a switch in the office and, and add a value to it.
Right. Thank you.
Uh huh.
That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else on Board of Equalization resolutions?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I had to move down there because the speakers back there aren't working again. Thank you, Jim, for bringing this up, for discussion. Unlike most people, I try to follow these things, but because of three or four main factors, the citizens are very suspicious of the way things operate. I'm going to name those factors and why I think so according to this particular resolution. The lack of transparency and two-way discussion with the citizens, the lack of citizens' comments, general lack of explanation to the citizens. Things appear to be somewhat corrupt. Now, as I look down this list, and I wonder why, when I'm forced to have my process of challenging you on my property value, why these, these people have not had values set already? Oh, is it because they're tax-exempt? But the Omaha, City of Omaha sold some property, the Housing Authority, the Municipal Land Bank sold some property, and then, of course, there's various charitable organizations, apparently, sold some properties. Forever North, for one, and Holy Name Housing. All of this implies that there's unequal treatment under the law. There are people living in some of these places, like the Forever North and Holy Name Housing. Why did they not have values? Whoever owned the property, did the city own all of it? Or did some of the churches own it? Why are you now saying that they need a value for 2024 when you've already told us what ours are and told us we cannot challenge any further? Here you come in now today, maybe setting a value from zero to whatever you think the new owner should pay. Or setting a value at next to nothing, like you probably did a while back, so that the people that use these had no property tax to pay. That's the way it seems. It would be nice if the county would have a real open debate on it someday with the citizens so that we could understand it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anybody else on the resolutions? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
That concludes Board of Equalization. We'll now move to Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items 1A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. Do I have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda for items A through I. Do we have a motion and second for discussion? G-10? Oh, 18, sorry. All right. There's one request to take 1018, or excuse me, G-18 separately for the Charles Drew sub-resolution there. Any, all right. Second with that removal, that leaves the remaining consent agenda for discussion. It's been seconded by Boyle, so any questions? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Just for public record, on item F, approval of subaward contract between Lancaster County and Douglas County pursuant to the 2022 OJJDP non-participating Title II grant funding requirements, and Ms. Havicati, your name is on this. First of all, OJJDP, I doubt if most people know what that means. What is that?
Kim Havicati, Deputy County Administrator. OJJDP stands for the Office of Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention. It's a federal agency.
Right. And non-participating Title II grant, what's that?
Title II funds are block grants to all 50 states that the federal government does. If a state does not want to take those block grant funds, they then open them up to the counties to apply for those block grants. In 2022, the state of Nebraska, through the Crime Commission, decided not to go for that federal block grant, so it was opened up to the counties to apply for it.
Okay. And the non-participating Title II grant?
Correct. That's because we are considered a non-participating state because the state didn't go for it and the counties did.
Right. And Title II grants are for?
Rational and ethnic disparities.
So this is for $72,768. What would we use that for specifically?
That's the portion that is going to Lancaster County. The total grant was $570,000. That is coming to Douglas County. Of that $570,000, the $72,000 is going to Lancaster County.
Okay, so $500,000 would remain in Douglas County?
$500,000 pretty much remains in Douglas County, and those funds are currently being used for our stability services that we use for pre-adjudicated use through our home program to keep you safely at home.
Okay. Why are we doing it this way? Why wouldn't Lancaster County get their own?
They could have. This was at the request of the federal government so that they didn't have to do it two different ways that would all come to us, and we would do a subaward then to Lancaster County. And it benefited Douglas County because then we did not get into a competitive grant situation with other counties. It still gave us the majority of the grant funds, Commissioner.
So other than Douglas and Lancaster County, do any other counties in Nebraska receive these funds?
No other counties applied for them. So no.
So the entire state award was $572,000?
Correct. And the state decided not to go for it.
In previous years, what's been our level of participation in this grant funding?
Pretty much since 2018, Douglas County has obtained the OJJDP non-participating Title II, except for one year where the entire amount was given to Lancaster County.
And for instance, last year, how much did Douglas County receive?
Last year, well, if you're going off of the 2023 Title II grant funds, the state of Nebraska got all of those funds because they decided to keep them. So starting in 2018, we've received for every year, each grant year, about $450,000.
And this would help us keep kids out of incarceration. Is that correct?
Correct. It's used for the home program, knowing that electronic monitor is being used on these youth, but also putting in-home family support services and day reporting services to strengthen our electronic monitoring program.
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on consent agenda? If not, we'll vote.
And Commissioners, while you're voting, I just want to point out on item H1, there was a revised resolution that was presented to you all today. It's pretty small changes. The rest of the backup remains the same.
All right.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. There was one item we are taking separately, which again is G-18, the agreement with Charles Drew Health Center Omaha Health Start Program. So I'll take a motion and second for that one. Motion by Morgan, second by Boyle. Any discussion on G-18 specifically? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstaining. All other Commissioners voting yes.
That takes us to Section 3 for recognitions and proclamations. The first one is item A, resolution recognizing October as Black Paternal Health Month, co-sponsored by Commissioner Rogers and Boyle, so I'll toss it to both of them if one of you want to take the lead.
Milford, can you get our mic working, please? Thank you.
Thanks. So because of the disparity, especially between black and non-black particularly mothers, when it comes down to maternal health, it's very important, I think, to bring this to light, especially in light of the deaths of, of black women and birthing folks and whenever in pregnancy, it's a, it's really a national crisis. We need to bring this to our attention. So be it resolved, whereas a person's race should not determine their health outcomes, and pregnancy and childbirth should be safe for all. However, for individuals of color, specifically black women and birthing folks, safety and equity have been tragically denied. And whereas in Nebraska, black infants are twice as likely to die during birth, and the rates for birthing parents mirror this tragic outcome, Nebraska has the second highest difference between white and black baby's death rates in the nation. And whereas black mothers die from complications related to pregnancy at roughly two to three times the rate of other women, regardless of their income or education levels. Whereas in Nebraska, 51.6% of counties are defined as maternal maternity care deserts, areas without birthing facilities or maternity care providers. Black women living in areas of higher poverty have an increased likelihood of inadequate prenatal care. And whereas to improve maternal outcomes, black women and birthing folks should have the right to seek medical care and control their healthcare decisions without barriers such as income, education, or zip code, and that all women must have equitable access to the full spectrum of reproductive and mental health care before, during, and after pregnancy. And whereas to improve maternal women's, or black women's maternal health, we need a comprehensive approach that addresses health across the lifespan, improves access to quality care, provides greater economic security to women, and uses policy to create system change. And whereas all Nebraskans must raise awareness of the state of black maternal health by understanding the consequences of systemic discrimination, recognizing the need for urgent solutions, amplifying the voices and experiences of black women, families, and communities, and committing to build a world in which black women do not have to fear for their well-being, dignity, and lives before, during, and after pregnancy. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this Board of Commissioners, that the Board hereby declares and recognizes the month of October next month, Black Maternal Health Month, and encourages our residents to bring awareness to, find solutions, and utilize opportunities to change these tragic outcomes for black birthing people in influence, dated this 24th day of September 2024. I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Boyle, second by Rogers. Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Both any comments or questions?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. This is another thing that needs to be discussed because the way this words, I have to protest that this is part of a diversity, equity, and inclusion program, which on a national basis is being rejected now, particularly in universities. And the reason is, is a socialist Marxist program. If you use common sense, when you tell me that you have to have a Black Maternal Health Month, you're telling me that you don't want one for white maternal health. That's discriminatory? It's Marxist. Please stop this stuff and take the funding for DEI programs out of our county government. You work for us, not for national organizations that are changing this country for the worst. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Thank you for that comment. These are simply facts. It has nothing to do with being Marxist. Black women die more frequently, and my other side gig is OB-GYN physician, so I see this. This is a, a simple fact. Even people like Venus Williams has had blood clots that have been unrecognized and hard, it wasn't a matter of income, education. It, it really simply has to do with the way the medical system, we need to, we need to do a better job, and I'm putting that on myself, of recognizing these disparities and doing something about it. So you can have opinions about this, but I'm not talking about an opinion, I'm reporting facts here. So this is a crisis, and black women and birthing folks are dying as a result of the, the feeling of inequity there. So call it what you want as a DEI initiative, but it's a scientific medical fact that part of our population is dying as a result of circumstances in, in our healthcare system and in society. Thank you.
Thank you. You had, you had your, your four minutes, Larry, on this topic, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Dr. Hughes?
Good morning, Dr. Hughes. Douglas County Health Department Director, 11141, South 41st Street. Don't remember where I work anymore. I wanted to commend the Board for bringing this issue of black maternal mortality and health to the forefront and recognizing the issue that's out there. This is the definition of a public health issue. We know scientifically that there is really no biological basis for black women and black infants to experience poor health and death at higher rates than white. That leaves very, very few factors that are actually in play that are causing that, and those are really systemic issues that all of us can address. So I wanted to commend the Board for their resolution proclaiming October as Black Maternal Health Month, and I also wanted to, as your local health director, add my support to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Anybody else?
Good morning. My name is Joyce Von Druasik. I live at 619 South 37th Street. I just want to speak in support of the measure. I'm in opposition to what was just said by Larry over here. I think that we can do a lot better than measures like this, though, and the best thing we could do to address these systemic problems, instead of simply talking about it and passing measures like this every year or something, is to pass universal healthcare to completely remove the income-based disparities between who has access to healthcare. That would completely solve the problem, the urban-rural divide on this problem if people out in rural communities had free access at the point of service to healthcare. And so I think we can do much better, and I would insist and encourage everybody who's going to vote yes on this to think hard about universal healthcare at all levels of government. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this resolution? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll move forward to items B and C, B being the recognition of a retiring employee, being Mr. Kevin Monoc. Hopefully, I pronounced that correctly, who worked for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office for 26 years. So we thank him for his dedicated service to Douglas County and our citizens for 26 years of service. And we also have Russell Will Wording, which I also give my apologies if I pronounced that not correctly, but Russell worked for the Douglas County Office of Engineering for 31 years. So we thank Russell for his 31 years of dedicated service to our citizenry as well. So if the Board so desires, we could approve those together. Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. And we'll vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to Section 4, Presentations. We have one presentation today, which is item A from our Sheriff's Office, so I will toss it to them to introduce the topic.
Eric Sellers, 3601 North 156th Street. I work for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. I'm the captain of the Criminal Investigations Bureau. I want to thank you for allowing us to come and present to you. Our hopes here is to kind of, to open your eyes on what challenges... Can you hear me now? I want to open your eyes on what challenges we're, we're facing with the Sheriff's Office, with successes we're having with the Sheriff's Office. I believe in the past, we operate kind of behind the wall, and you don't necessarily hear everything that, that we do back in criminal investigations. And I really want to start, you know, quarterly or yearly coming to you and letting you know what, what we're facing and letting you buy in on the choices we make and addition of personnel needed or, or equipment we need. So with me is Jason Stellic. He's our sergeant of our persons crimes with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. We have Sergeant John McFarland, and he is the sergeant overseeing the property crimes. About a year and a half ago, the sheriff and I and the chiefs had a discussion on how we can improve investigations, and it was decided at that time, if we could operate on two systems, two sergeants, one focusing on crimes against persons and the other crimes against people with their respective crews, we can better streamline that process. And so far, I think we can show that we've had successes with that over the last year or so, although all crimes seem to go up each year 5%, 10%, and sometimes even more. I think what the graphs will show you, we can show you that a lot of those, the arrests are, we have more arrests and the crimes are going down to some degree. Okay, the first, first slide we're going to show, you'll see on the board here, we have different assaults, child porn, disturbing the peace, domestic violence, hate crimes, missing persons, murder, robbery, sexual assaults and weapons crimes. And those are, anytime we make an arrest, if we find a weapon on the person, that's what that will fall under. So you'll see two numbers on here. So the 20, the five-year average from 2019 to 2023, we show for assaults, we show an increase of about 14.75% is what crimes has gone up over those five years. However, in January to August of '23 to '24 in this last year, we're seeing a decrease now by 23%. Child porn cases. Now that's, that's a tough one. You'll see back in 2019 and 2020, we received almost no reports. Over the last few years, we've increased by about 126%. Something we want to improve on to, to investigate. Right now, we have, you know, one full-time dedicated investigator to look at these cases. However, his attention's been pulled elsewhere as other crimes increase. We need to focus on that. So in the near future, we'd really like to get somebody focused back on child porn cases 100% of the time. Disturbing the peace totals, again, in, there has been a decrease in the last five years by 13%. However, in this last year, there has been an increase of 72% in these cases. Now, all these cases that I'm referring to are all within Douglas County unincorporated, so outside the city limits and only what we investigate at the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Drug offenses. There has been an increase each year of 29% in the last five years. However, in this last year, we've decreased by 12%, which we're very proud of. Domestic violence totals increase again in the last five years of approximately 18% a year. Within this last year, we have decreased by about 10% and we'll see how the, how the year finishes off, of course, on that. Hate crime reporting in the last five years, we've definitely seen a spike of an increase of 137%. This last year, about an 8% decrease. We're continuing to investigate as much as we can and we do want to, we want to get that number down. Murders. Now, last year was a very tough year. I'm sure you all heard, we had put a few murders in the county that we investigated. We had five murders that tied up hundreds of hours of all of our investigators, whether your crimes against persons or property, it was all hands on deck when it came to these and we're very proud to say that we solved all of those. And this year so far, we have had none. Robbery. We show a decrease of 50% in the last five years. Mostly in 2020, we had, we had a high year of 18 robberies. If you take that number out, that outlier, usually they stay around four to five robberies a year, which would stay fairly consistent. And when I talk about those spikes, they're usually, it's usually a group of people that go out and commit several robberies and until we can take them off the street, make an arrest, they'll continue until, and those are usually, that's attributed to that large number you see there. Sexual assaults, again, a decrease in five years of 23% increase of about 95% just from this time of last year. So we're doing what we can there. This is a tough one. It's hard for us to pinpoint where any sexual assaults would occur. We're trying to, we're getting together to discuss why they're occurring, if, if these are sexual assaults by known parties and how to inform the public and keep people safe there. So we're talking about how we can decrease that right now. And weapons arrests. Again, it seems like we're seeing a large increase in weapons were taken off of people. Anytime we do a court authorized search warrant, it, it seems that we're, there's a weapon involved somewhere and you'll see an increase of 60% over the last five years and 35% increase over just this last year. Jason, do you want to discuss anything on persons crimes?
Okay. Get the next slide up.
Again, that last portion was crimes against persons. It's, it's a tough one for us to track and try to stop or reduce because most of the time, we're not going to know when somebody's going to be assaulted, when there's going to be a sexual assault or a robbery. We can do what we can to try to prevent that. But property crimes, it's, it's more trackable. We can identify trends and patterns and try to put as many investigators in a certain area to reduce those as possible. So you'll see some different numbers here. Auto thefts. There has been an increase in auto thefts of 52%, however, in this last year, a decrease of 33%. Now, this is mostly, mostly attributed to 2023 where there were, there were a large group of youths stealing, who were they, Hyundai's or Kia's? And you know, it was something that was advertised on YouTube nationally on how to do it and it was, it seemed like it was a daily occurrence, we would see those. But over this last year, that trend's kind of gone by its side and now we're, we've seen a decrease of 33%. Burglaries. Increase of only 1% each year over the last five years and within this last year, that's decreased by 4%. And I would say that the, what's causing this decrease is, would, would be a shared effort between us and Omaha Police. As you know, they have the real, the real-time crime center now and, and we do have the LPRs that you all agreed to and, and they're, they're so helpful. You know, we have them out there. If we have a suspicious car or a car seen outside of burglary, we can go back and find it, if we can find it on the LPRs, we're able to trace the suspects down that way. Thefts from vehicles. About 1% increase each year, but a 4% decrease this last year. Our investigators, they're doing a very good job on identifying suspects. Again, I think a lot of this has to do with the LPRs and making arrests on this. Now I'm going to have Sergeant John McFarland come up to the podium and discuss a couple of the cases and arrests we've made on the crime trends we've seen in thefts of construction sites and burglaries and, and kind of talk to you a little bit about the successes we've had there. John?
Good morning. John McFarland, 3601 North 156th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Sergeant with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. I'll just highlight some of our case successes over the last year, specifically in the property crime section. And then I think there was one last slide that we slipped in at the very end, at the request of the Sheriff, just to highlight our financial crimes over the last year. So Nicholas Palma, during the summer, early summer into about June, Douglas County Sheriff's and unincorporated Douglas County was being hit with a spike in crime and theft from vehicle cases. This was across the county, not in one specific area. Collaborative efforts with our investigators, going out, speaking with community, gathering information, intel and video footage, identified the suspect, Nicholas Palma. Palma is a known suspect not just Douglas County Sheriff's Office, but also Omaha Police Department and the greater metropolitan area. He has a long rap sheet, numerous instances of arrests and incarcerations. During the time, we retrieved and analyzed video surveillance from homeowners and retailers, shared information through social media platforms and with other agencies. On 24th of June 2024, an arrest warrant was sought for Palma. A search warrant was executed at his residence and recovered over $6,800 of identified stolen property from the numerous victims in Douglas County and the city of Omaha. He was arrested and incarcerated at the Douglas County Sheriff, or Douglas County Correction Center as of the creation of this slide. Immediately after his arrest and incarceration, we saw a 33% drop in theft from vehicle cases, just going to show that the investigative efforts of our agency combined with other agencies in the metro and the citizens of Douglas County led to the drop in crime. Next, we're going to talk construction crime. This is a, almost exclusive to Douglas County, unincorporated Douglas County. Omaha does have their fair share of construction crime, but unincorporated Douglas County is expanding at such a rapid rate. It is something we are always trying to knock down and identify suspects. Over the five-year average, 2023 saw a 16% increase and from January to July 23 verse 24, we saw a 24% decrease. That can be attributed to some of the arrests coming up and the efforts of our investigators. Martin or Martine Garcia Garcia. Early this summer, we saw a spike in theft from construction sites. This case and the next two will highlight why we were seeing these and how we were able to combat those. Topi, I should say Garcia Garcia is connected 5% of the construction theft in Douglas County to date from 2024. Victims recognized in this specific case and arrest, a victim recognized as power tools listed on Facebook Marketplace. The investigators went down to the area of where a pre-arranged meeting was to occur, conducted some surveillance on the suspect's residence and with that and some other information, secured a search warrant on his residence. At that search warrant, we recovered over 200 stolen power tools and hand tools and were able to return a large majority of the property back to the victims. He was arrested on July 16th, 2024, is currently incarcerated at the Douglas County Correction Center. We believe he was acting as a fence. He was receiving a lot of the stolen property from other individuals throughout thieving and then turning around and selling them on social media sites. We talked about Garcia Garcia. Next, we'll talk about Kirk Baldwin and Nathaniel Topi Perez. Kirk Baldwin, he's another one of these long-known suspects in Douglas County, has a long criminal record. He's connected to 11% of our construction theft cases to date in 2024. This spring, we saw a spike in construction theft, not just in the overnight hours, but also during the daytime hours. The suspect was going into mainly residential homes under construction and taking electrical equipment. Mr. Baldwin previously was an electrician. Retrieval and analysis of video surveillance from homeowners, retailers determined that Baldwin and his vehicle were suspects in the thefts of electrical breakers from homes under construction. In April, a search warrant was secured and executed at his residence. Numerous breakers and electrical equipment was recovered during that search warrant. He was arrested and booked into Douglas County Correction Center. He was then sentenced on a parole violation. We were able to return some of that property in that case. Next, Nathaniel Topi Perez. Again, early this summer, we saw a spike, just with those other two cases, construction theft in unincorporated Douglas County. Nathaniel Topi Perez is a known suspect of Douglas County Sheriff's Office specifically. He was arrested in December of 2023 while he was in possession of approximately $20,000 in construction property. We were able to identify him as a suspect, executed a search warrant at his residence, recovered another approximately $20,000 of property, 100, 100 power tools, some larger, larger equipment from his residence. He was on pre-trial release at that time. Immediately as we opened the door, we saw a lot of our property. He was arrested in July and is currently incarcerated at Douglas County Correction Center, waiting his court hearings. Finally, a current investigation we have going with not only Douglas County, but some of the surrounding agencies, we have identified two suspects involved in construction theft in not just unincorporated Douglas County, but also both sides of the river here in Omaha and Iowa. We are working with these agencies, home video surveillance and a tip identified two individuals as suspects in roofing material thefts, stealing materials and later selling them to companies, almost acting as a fence. We are working with both Nebraska and Iowa law enforcement agencies with similar, similar theft reports. This case is ongoing. And finally, we slipped in the slide here last minute on our financial crimes. This is one of our fastest growing crimes in unincorporated Douglas County. As you can see, over the last, against the five-year average, 2023 saw a 37% increase. From January to July 23 to 24, currently this year, we are seeing a decrease. I'd like to think those are some of the efforts of the Sheriff's Office and making everybody, the public aware of that, working with our community partners, both in the public and the private sector. 2024, year to date, we've had over $1.5 million reported loss to Douglas County Sheriff's Office in financial crimes and scams. Does anybody have any questions on property crimes?
Go ahead and conclude the, the comprehensive presentation, then we'll take questions from everybody.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I just wanted to pinpoint, as you see the decrease in crimes, whether they're persons crimes or property crimes, I, I want to thank you all for your efforts, allowing us to hire not only a, well, to buy equipment we need like the LPRs, but we've hired an analyst that she, she's, she's great. She puts everything together for us in a package. She works well with Omaha Police and we know crime trends while they're happening and we can get that out to our patrol division to, to look for certain cars or people at that time. And it's because of your efforts with us to, to protect the citizens, we've been able to do that. Okay, I'm open up for questions.
All right. Thank you so much, gentlemen. We're going to go ahead and jump into discussion here, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you, Sheriff, and your staff for this report. I think it, it's good to get these on the heels of what we had, I believe it was last week, from staff about the demographics of Douglas County, particularly the unincorporated areas, which I think has a population of 89, 90,000, 90,000 people of the 600,000 in our county. And so these numbers would be reflective of that population that you have primary responsibility for.
Correct, correct, yes.
Right, right. And, you know, that said, it also comes on the heels of the FBI's report, I believe, yesterday, showing, you know, pretty significant decrease in violent crimes. And, you know, some of that is reflected here, but there's little ups and downs. I want to note that of the 90,000 roughly residents you've got, all of these numbers for the last complete year seem to be at the highest in like the 130 level. So, you know, out of 90,000 people, you get 130 auto thefts in a year, which, you know, puts it in perspective that you're doing a great job of detecting crime and fighting it. At the same time, a great job of maintaining relative public safety. We live in a relatively safe community.
I think so.
Right. And I, I give you full credit for, for, you know, contributing to that because as we saw from your report here, when you do effective detective work and you pick up somebody who's responsible for 20% of a particular crime category, that's really a big deal and that doesn't happen because of a random stop. That's detective work. That's, my hat's off to you for, for doing that.
Absolutely, thank you.
That said, I, I think that the takeaway from this is you're doing a great job and as a result, we live in a relatively safe community. And so the resources that we devote to you and the Sheriff's Office are money well-spent. And so thank you for this and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I want to add, I want to add something really quick. Douglas County Sheriff Aaron Hansen, thank you for that comment. Two things that are, that are, I really want to highlight there. We are starting to come down off the post-COVID spikes. So we did see that spike in violence in the years, COVID years and following COVID. So now we're starting to hopefully continue that downward trend. But Commissioner, you also nailed the other big salient point and that is, it is a small handful of offenders in our community that are committing the majority of the crime. And that's why we did go through the additional steps of actually highlighting so you can see, because that's where the partnership, not only with, internally with other agencies, but also with our partners in Douglas County Corrections, for those individuals that are under pre-trial release supervision, it's vital. Because if you can control that small manageable population, you can impact crime in a big way.
Hunter's attorney, I want to commend you for noting that these- Aaron's attorney, I want to commend you for noting that these individuals incarcerated are innocent until proven guilty. And you put that actually in the report, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Thanks again.
Commissioner Morgan.
I want to thank you for the presentation. When you talked about the decreases, are you doing year-to-date numbers, not for the full year? In other words, you're comparing it with the same time last year?
Correct.
Okay. I also want to make a statement without saying too much, and I stand to be corrected by the sheriff. But the job you're doing is pretty unbelievable. I happen to know the sheriff is out sometimes himself at whatever, 3:00 in the morning in neighborhoods, not just outside the county, but in the city if he gets the report. And I just want to thank you. I've sat behind your back when someone comments that you're kind of on everything, and I want to thank you for the excellent service and follow-up that you're doing. And I mean that toward the sheriff, who I'm not sure when you sleep, but whatever four hours you're getting, and then back out at 2:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning, because I've offered to go with him sometime. I'm not sure he'd want me tagging along, but I really appreciate what you're doing in neighborhoods within our city and the county.
Well, those are kind words, but for sure, the lion's share, 99.9% of the credit should go to our deputies who are actually doing the hard work.
But at the same time, as a manager, you're out there setting, if I was a deputy, I'd be thinking, this guy sets the example for all of us. And so I do want to mention that, because you really are out doing it.
Absolutely.
And thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And just take it as safely as you can, because that's important to us. Also is your safety.
Thank you.
Just a quick note on my end, it's good to see some of these decreases in some of these categories from last year to this year, showcasing the quality of work being done in the Sheriff's Office Department. And also, I know there's, despite some of the decreases, which we do want to see, I know there's also been a lot going on with the murder cases, you know, within the last year or two, with the tornado response. And thank you for being a collaborative partner with emergency management, you know, health department, everybody else involved in emergency response, because, you know, it's a moment where everybody needs to come together and just work for the better good of the community. And so traffic control, you know, and then the follow-up with people who try to commit property thefts, you know, and after a tornado or a storm happens, I know all of you have been on top of that at the sheriff's department. So I thank you for all your work with everything that's been going on in the community with these last few years, pandemic, storms, murders, et cetera. So it's been quality services at the sheriff's department, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Wanted to mention what's something else that I
I thought of. I've talked to a couple postmen, the United States mail delivery people. Unbelievable what's going on with the mailboxes, and that's all over. And they've talked about that, how, you know, these people are going through neighborhoods and the mailboxes are open and mailbox harm that's coming in our community, and I'm sure you've seen that. And I stand to be corrected if you say, no, that's not a problem. But I think it really is a serious problem, whether you're putting up that red flag and somebody else is getting the mail, or they're going through your actual mail.
Yes, absolutely, we're seeing that. And I believe the whole goal of the suspects there, they're taking the mail to find what they can to wash a check or commit some type of fraud. And our sheriff was out this morning at, between 3:00 and 5:00 this morning, and identified a person we're going to now look into and made another arrest. So when we talk about him out there working and leading by example, he's certainly doing it.
Thank you. Do you know what kind of caffeine the sheriff uses to?
Once I figure that out, I'm going to use it too.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. Anybody else on this presentation? If not, we'll conclude. Thank you so much again.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to Section 6, Public Hearing. There is Item A, a hearing to set the final county tax rates for fiscal year 24, 25. I believe our finance director, Lori Persch, will speak on this item. With that being said, I shall now open the public hearing to set the final tax rates.
Is this on? Okay. This is just the setting the tax levy for the year. If you'll all recall, last year, this Board of Commissioners elected to reduce the levy by a half cent for the budget. In the current year, we have kept it flat. And just in light of trying to figure out with the LB 34 and what that impact may be, it just seemed like a prudent thing to do to leave it where it's at. But obviously, that's up to the board to decide. So for right now, we're keeping it consistent with prior year, is what I have in the budget.
All right. And as a reminder for context, Lori, the budget we passed a few weeks ago, what is the balance on that budget? How, how much in the black war are we with that?
It is a breakeven budget. We have a slight surplus, but I mean slight. It is like $1,500. So it is a very, very, very slim margin. So it is breakeven. We, you know, we are not in the red, but it is, it's tight where we're at.
And that was assuming that the levy stayed flat?
With, yeah, with the assumption that we keep the levy flat.
Okay, thank you for that context. With that, we'll open up discussion. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And Lori, we've talked about this. The legislature's action that you referred to relative to LB
34.
Was to set budget limits.
Yes, spending limits.
Spending limits on counties. Do we know what the impact in terms of dollars of that legislative action is on Douglas County?
Not yet. We're, we have some spreadsheets, and we're working through that, along with the finance directors of several other counties, and of course, the municipalities as well that it affects, but that is still TBD.
Right. And if we leave the mill levy flat, what amount of revenue will that generate for Douglas County?
It is, it's on that notice here, just a moment. The property tax request is $202,377,114 that we'll bring in.
I'm sorry, say again, please? And our budget amount for this year?
The total budget, including ARPA, was like 607 million, and the general fund was, I'd have to go back and look, but it's quite a bit lower than that 300 and some million.
Okay. Recently, we had a hearing here pursuant to state law that is required annually of governmental entities whose tax bill goes up, I guess you would say.
Yes.
And that happens if you keep the mill levy the same and you increase the value of the property in the county, which has happened here.
Right. The valuations go up and the levy is the same, then you will bring in more, and, you know, you get an allowable growth percentage. If it's beyond that allowable growth percentage, then you have to have, you know, be present at the joint public hearing that we had last week and explain, you know, your budget dollars and what you're using those dollars for.
Right. So that happened to Douglas County, and so year over year, with the same mill levy that we had last year, how much more revenue would we raise this year?
Well, this year, it is 202 million. Last year, it was 188 million.
Okay, so 202 million?
So 14 million more.
14 million more, okay. And how much is a mill? How much does a one-mill generate in revenue?
You know, I'd have to go back and calculate it. I know the half penny that we did last year was 3 million. I think a half penny this year would be, I just calculated it, like 3, 3 and 1/2 million.
Right. So we are proposing that we would increase the property tax bills of property owners in Douglas County, $14 million, if we take the action that you're proposing.
Of keeping the levy?
Same.
Same.
We'd go from
Yes.
188 million to 202.
Yes, uh huh.
In the hearing last, I believe it was Wednesday, all the jurisdictions who had that happening came in and testified to justify their increase, right?
Yes.
Okay. Did the city of Omaha come in?
No.
Did the Omaha Public Schools come in?
No.
Okay. So they either lowered their mill levy or anticipate lowering their mill levy or cut their budget. Is that what you presume from that?
Yes, I think so, mhm.
Otherwise, they'd be required to do what we did, which is come in and explain.
Right. So, and if they're keeping their revenues the same, they must be using other sources.
That's time we can come back around.
Yeah.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Every year at this time, I would, I would point out that it's probably important to note some of these things, and I don't, I don't say it that often, but I have said it. I said it last year. I'm going to say it again. What, it's really important to note and understand how, for all of us, I own property, my property taxes went up, just like everybody else, and understand what type of control mechanisms and what type of factors go into that stuff. That's not word salad. That's real. It's important to note, and Lori did a really, really good job last week of noting what Douglas County actually has to do, what we have to do, and the amount of money, the amount of revenue that we actually generate, the actual amount of property tax revenue we generate that's being pulled from all of us. It's important to note that Douglas County receives approximately 13% of the property tax revenue. Lori laid that out, 13%. The city receives more, the schools receive a heck of a lot more. I'm not, by the way, this is not excuse-making. I'm, I'm trying to communicate what I learned from the time that I was a tax wonk in the legislature to when I actually got here and saw it, felt it. The legislature and the governor, I probably would have voted for what they were doing if I would have been down there. They capped our spending capacity. That's what they did with LB 34. What needs to be understood is what we're going to end up having to do is look at the non-mandated services that we have, and we're going to have to look at cuts. We are. That's going to happen. Not apologizing for it, that's what we'll have to do. Legislature dictates to us how we approach our business 90% of the time, and we're going to have to look at cuts. I'm saying it here in public right now, it's going to happen. Whether it succeeds or not, that's a different story. Oh, but keep in mind, over 50 of the services that we provide at the county level, 50, over 50 services, over 50 services that we provide at the county level are mandated by a state statute, or the, or the state actually says, no, you will fund it. Or the feds say it, no, you will fund it. There's a statute behind it. If there's a statute behind it and they say you don't have to fund it, they're essentially telling you that another entity is going to fund it, or you're going to have a public-private partnership and it's going to get funded. Somebody's going to do it. If you don't do it, somebody may sue you, somebody may come after you, who knows? 27 that are not mandated, however, many of those services people in Douglas County depend on. I don't want to, all kinds of things. The, the Long-Term Care Center, for example, Douglas County Health Department. Tell me where you'd like us to whittle some of those things down. Tell me. I'll have some of my own determinations, but I'd like to hear it. What the legislature and the governor did in this last session only addressed half the problem. Here's what I mean. They did almost nothing to control assessment growth. Now, Mike knows this well, and the assessors know this well. That growth is what it is. There's nothing, you go, here is the valuation, here is what this sold for last time, here is what you're going to get taxed. The legislature did virtually nothing to provide predictability as far as assessments. So guess what happens? We get 13% of the revenue, everything goes up because assessments are still going up to a certain degree.
That's time.
I'm not done.
We can come back around. Sorry, Commissioner Friend. Well, if nobody else is in the queue, you can keep going with that stream.
So I don't believe I'm doing this to bloviate. I'm doing this because I want people to understand that we get it. I was watching the whole thing last week. I know it, I feel it, everybody on this board feels it. The big question is, what did the legislature do in regard to predictability, in regard to tax authority, as far as our decision-making and attitude toward all this? I would love right now to actually lower the levy. You know how much that would help? About this much, about that much. You know why? Because once we lower it and we have to go in and pay for those 50 services, we're going to go, all right, well, there's no more money. Let's go to the Long-Term Care Center and let's start slashing, or let's close it. Do you want to be the person who's going to tell one of those 250 people that they're kicked out on the street? If that's what I was elected for and I have to do it, then that's what I'll do. But I don't want to do that. Most of the people in that facility need to be there. 80%, 80 to 90% of them, we go through this at every trustees meeting, are, for all intents and purposes, need to be there because they have nowhere else to go. I, I'm passionate about this because I didn't understand. I spent a certain amount of time down in Lincoln making decisions that affected our decision-making, and I didn't care. I sat on the revenue committee and said, you know what? We're $300,000, we're $300,000 short of revenue, we're going to cut. Well, what impact is that going to have? Forget about NAGO for a minute. What impact is that going to have on Arthur County? What impact is that going to have on Cheyenne County? What impact is that going to have on Douglas County? I don't think I'm that stupid, but I didn't care. Maybe I am that stupid. I'll let, I'll let others weigh in. The bottom line is, the bottom line with this is, the most frustrating part is that I went down and testified in front of a legislative committee about our inheritance tax. I said, this is a terrible tax. It needs to go away. But guess what? Douglas County gets $17 million of inheritance tax money. The reason I'm maybe a little exercised about that is, remember those 50 programs that we have to pay for? That's 17 million dollars gone if they do that. So I testified in a neutral capacity. I had people afterward in other counties going, well, we're a little disappointed you testified neutral. I said, that tax is terrible. But the fact of the matter is appropriations needs to sit down and they need to say, that $17 million, we have 50 programs, we're making you run, you don't have any choice, you better make them run, like the sheriff's department, like corrections, like, like Tom Riley's office, public defender, like the county attorney, don't have any choice, do it. And then they say, by the way, do it with less money. We are not going to, this board, I think I can speak for the whole board, we're not going to jeopardize public safety, and we're not going to do something that's going to put the county in a precarious situation. That's why I will vow to work with the legislature to say, look, if you want to make more predictability, let's make it. But the fact of the matter is, the problem is not solved. The problem's just beginning. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. I'll take a brief round just for a few quick comments. When we hear 12 to 14 million dollars, you know, of extra revenue that go with the extra assessment growth, obviously to the average person, that's a lot of money, of course it is. In the world of having to manage government systems, you know, whether it's city, state, county, et cetera, that can be eaten up by necessary expenses that are mandated upon us and that also are required to actually have a functional government. For example, For example, we're mandated to provide medical services to those who are incarcerated. We have to do it. There's no choice. And we have about eleven hundred individuals, more or less, that are incarcerated on any given day. So, we have a contractor that provides medical services to them. That contract went up about four million dollars. And so, from one year to the next. And we got a bid from a different contractor. It was about the same cost. We looked at a national scale, what's going on. We saw that, you know, all of them are saying we're catching up with, you know, post-pandemic inflation, post-pandemic salary increases that everybody has to meet. So, there was no other way to provide medical services except to, of course, pay for them at the market rate that they're at, they're at now. So, that's, you know, four million extra right there. You think about insurance premiums. You know, they can go up on any given year. You know, I worked in HR for a little bit, for a moment, in, in the nonprofit sector. They can go up ten, fifteen, twenty percent over one year easily. Insurance premiums can. Now, imagine insurance premiums for twenty-six hundred employees, or excuse me, yeah. How many, Patrick, what's the latest count of employees?
Well, I would say about twenty-three hundred full-time.
Twenty-three hundred full-time, some part-time, which also receive benefits. So, that's a lot of insurance premiums that we're paying for. Imagine an increase that we have to meet when it's ten, fifteen, twenty percent, which is not uncommon nowadays. That easily can add up into the millions at times if it's a twenty percent increase over a year. Union contracts, our personnel, people who actually serve as citizens. You know, three percent doesn't sound like a lot, but when you pay three percent to big unions that have four hundred, five hundred, six hundred employees, that ends, adds up when you have to do cost of living increases and salary increases because, well, any hard-working individual, whether it's private or public sector, deserves a decent cost of living increase, you know? So, all this adds up quite a bit. So, it's not that, you know, somehow that extra revenues, revenue is gonna go into a nice little savings account. I mean, the budget is literally fifteen hundred dollars in, in the block. Fifteen hundred, that's, that's nothing. That's my mortgage, you know, in one month. So, we're hoping that, you know, we're actually do end up in the black just at the current, you know, revenue that we have anticipated for twenty-four, twenty-five. So, it's, it's not easy to maintain a functional, stable government. We likely will have to look at some low-hanging fruit for cuts in this upcoming year with, you know, the different changes that are happening at the legislature. Hopefully, we don't have to go beyond those low-hanging fruit. But, you know, as Commissioner Friend said, we'll, we'll deal with what comes before us in the coming years. So, those are just my quick notes on it. Anybody else on this topic? If not, we'll close the public hearing and, yep.
I apologize. Turn this on. Teresa York County Attorney's Office. I wanted to make the board aware of a correction to Exhibit B. It was through inadvertence. It just cites to, if you turn your attention to Exhibit B, it cites to Nebraska Vice Statute seventy-seven sixteen oh one point oh two. The legislature transferred that to seventy-seven sixteen thirty-two. And so, it should read seventy-seven sixteen thirty-two and seventy-seven sixteen thirty-three. It's correct in the resolution in the third whereas paragraph, but in Exhibit B, it needs that correction through inadvertence there to state the right statutes.
Okay. Thank you, Teresa. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Are we gonna have public comment from the public?
Yeah, I just asked if anybody had additional comment, which includes the public.
Oh.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sean Kelly, five-two-one-two, Underwood Avenue. I'm asking for a property tax decrease for Douglas County. So, the budget was adopted on July ninth. Since then, the valuations have been certified with one billion dollars of additional valuations come in. That equates to roughly about three million dollars of additional funds received from taxes. I'm asking to honor the original budget from July ninth and reduce the mill levy. My math is correct. It's roughly around four tenths of a mil. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, any comment on that perspective as far as changes on expected revenue on certified properties and assessments, et cetera?
You know, the original budget did have an assumption of a little bit lower assumed increases in property values than what they actually were certified at as of the twentieth. So, he is, he is correct in that regard.
Commissioners, if I can add to that, County, Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator. Keep in mind that you're gonna have supplemental budget requests, criminal justice, health and human services, and you're gonna have to make decisions. And I would strongly recommend you not decrease the levy, given what you're going to be faced with going forward with this new statute, where you're going to be restricted in non-public safety areas with how much revenue you could bring in. We ask that, from a management standpoint, we ask that, that you not do that, given what is surely coming.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanna add in on that and advocate against that. Seeing this cycle here for a number of years, to add on what Patrick has, this does not build in anything. Well, you do have some emergency clause, but the fact is, you're still gonna have all these other departments that you have to budget with this outside of this. And also, things have happened in the past that this kinda needs to be accounted for. I mean, the point to note is, with the fact of putting on a zero percent lid, except for public safety, all the other departments that need to function, you know, you come in with a structural deficit every year. So, taking everything out hurts us because when you come in the next year, you already have to go here. So, half the departments are not gonna be able to make that up. So, coming in at zero percent, and you got a four to five percent structural deficit, you'll never catch that up. I mean, we're fighting right now. So, my, my ask is that we don't move on where we're at and that we approve as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'm proposing that we do cut the mill levy by four tenths of a percent and give people property tax relief. We're generating more income than we need. And if we just stopped wasting money, we would have more than enough money to do what we're talking about doing. A classic example, of course, is the twenty-seven million dollar empty kids jail that we're paying on every single month. It stands as a testament to waste by Douglas County. And if we can propose a thirty million dollar jail increase for a unprecedented use of our correctional facility as a place to lock up people with mental illness, I think that, you know, we can probably let the taxpayers in on some of the largest that we're spreading around for projects that are obviously wasteful. We're, we're talking about projects that are not mandated by the state. They're not mandated to build a twenty-seven million dollar empty kids jail. And we're not mandated by the state to build a thirty million dollar expansion of our adult facility. But we are, and that's not the worst part. Once you build it, you gotta run it. So, by incurring the initial waste and wasteful spending to build these fiascos, we incur long-term waste by having to staff them. And a good example of that is this medical contract that the chairman referred to, that we entered into. Since I've been on the board, I opposed it from the beginning because for the amount that we spend on the medical contract, what we were doing beforehand was running medical provisions of our Douglas County inmates ourselves for a lot less money. We could do that, too. The problem is, we're not looking at ways to save money. We're just looking at ways to increase the property tax due to the increase in the assessed value and try to let people think that we're not doing that. Well, we are. Your property tax bill will go up. And I'm saying, let's make the property tax bill go down and use common sense on some of these wasteful projects that we have entered into or are about to enter into and can be avoided. If we just quit doing stupid things, we'd save a lot of money. And so, I'm proposing an amendment to this resolution that says that we lower the property tax for the next year by point four percent, the mill levy, I'm sorry.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
That's a motion, yes.
We're, we're, sorry, Mr. Chair, we're still in the public hearing, so we can't make any motions yet, yeah.
Okay. We, we'll have to close. So, I'll loop back to your motion once we close it here shortly. With that, you did have one minute left, if you so desire.
Well, I mean, you know, my friend, Mr. Friend, talks about, well, we're gonna have to cut stuff, and he immediately goes to the best thing that we do, which is the Long Term Care Center at Douglas County Health Center. He never, ever talks about cutting anything in the correctional budget at all that aren't mandated, like the kids jail. We immediately go to human services rather than ever go to public safety. Well, they're both equally important, and they both have mandated and unmandated services that we provide. But he wants to go immediately to how we help people rather than how we lock people up. Never touched that. As a matter of fact, expand that by a thirty-plus million dollar expansion to lock sick people up. I mean, you know, I don't know about word salad, but there is a definite difference in emphasis if we can never, ever talk about the unmandated things that are going on right now over at the correction center and always talk about the good things that we do at the health center.
That's time. Thank you. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me say the, two things. One, the, there's the, you know, I just don't know how longer that dog is gonna hunt with the facility. I mean, that dog is tired, and that dog needs probably to, to be put out. I just don't know how long that's gonna hunt. Because first, the board can make that decision. The board chose to alter direction that, that that was on, but the board can make that decision, and that gap can be closed in three months. Two, the center's not even in the discussion because the center's in the part of the budget that's exempt from anything, the, the, the public safety side that can be funded. And two, which I'm sure he's chomping at the bit about it, but to get at the point made about the hospital, I've been on here for a good minute and have made several votes to keep that hospital there. But he is absolutely right in that calculation because, as I stated before, there is a structural deficit, and it's so much that that can take. And you take the structural deficit, and you take the competition that we have to do to keep employees, to make this place run, in the non-public health side. Because at some point during this next year, I'm gonna make the case that public health is public safety, like it's classified in the counties around the state. But if that is not accepted by the board, you've got public health that you have to fund. You've got all these other sides over here, and the only place to go. And this is not anything at the hospital, the only place to go is going to be there. And so, when we get to that point, I will gladly support going to the taxpayers because that's what we have to do now to make that ask. But the fact is, that point made by Commissioner Friend is exactly right. That's the first place that's gonna be because that is sustained. And we need to fight as much as we can, and I'm on record for doing that. But I just wanna say, he's not out of line by saying that. The state has put us in a situation where that's gonna be the thing to go because we're gonna have to fight to be able to keep employees on this other side of the house that has been, that has not been exempt from this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Kavanaugh and others on this board, they're right quite a bit, and I, I appreciate the fact, when they're right, I appreciate the fact that they are. And if I don't tell him enough, I, I appreciate his candor, and he is right on occasion. Here, he's wrong. He's wrong. I voted to lower the levy lid. You know what happened? Nothing. Nothing. People are still mad about their property taxes. You see my point here? And if we lower this levy lid, I'm not gonna vote to increase it. If you stripped away everything, everything that a government entity, and here's why Commissioner Kavanaugh is dead wrong. If you stripped away everything that a government entity is supposed to be doing, you stripped it all away. What's your job? What is your job? Constitutionally, what is your job? Statutorily, what are you supposed to do? Public safety. We don't have to do anything else at the county level. Public safety. You look at the feds, you look at the states, you look at the counties, you look at the cities. What is a governmental subdivision's job? Public safety. He can accuse me of saying, well, the first thing he goes to is the Long Term Care Center. We're not obligated to do it, statutorily or constitutionally. We are obligated to provide corrections. No choice. And, by the way, forget about the obligation. Forget about the fact that that's what government is supposed to do. He's wrong. I am not gonna vote for a levy lid increase next year. So, if we wanna roll the dice and we wanna lower that levy lid, A, nobody's gonna be happy about it 'cause their, 'cause their assessments are still going up and they're gonna get taxed more. And B, we're gonna be in a position where we're gonna be going, boy, how do we make sure that we have the infrastructure that we need and with all of the resources that we have to have? Do you know how expensive public safety is right now? Does anybody have any clue? I have a clue. It's gone up exponentially. I'll say it again, final point. I will not sacrifice public safety because it is our core responsibility. Constitutionally, statutorily, it's what we are supposed to do. Everything else is white noise, folks. Everything else is white noise. Now, here's the funny thing. Some of that white noise, a lot of the people in our, in our constituency, and a lot of people in this county, like it. Like the two hundred and fifty people that live at the Long Term Care Center. I don't know how to make it any plainer. We start lowering levy lids, and we do what the legislature commands of us. It's putting us in a very, very precarious situation. And not for one se, and, and by the way, everybody says, well, oh, uh, uh, public safety is, the legislature gave them a free ride. That's money that still comes out of our pocket. Sheriff's Department is paid for by property taxes. Corrections is paid for by property taxes. It doesn't matter whether they're excluded. It still comes out of our bucket. We have to pay for it. And we don't, there's no choice. Commissioner Kavanaugh's right about eighty percent of the time. Today, he's wrong. I would gladly lower the levy lid, but let me tell you something. A year from now, you ask me to lift it, I'm not gonna. And then when we start cutting stuff, I don't wanna hear the wailing and gnashing of teeth. I don't wanna hear it 'cause I will explode. I will go off. I'll go, well, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're the one that wanted to lower the levy lid last year, and we did. And now, we don't have enough money. You think we're flush with cash? We have to make an Oracle transition at some point. Guess how much that is? We've talked about it in, in this chamber. We've talked about it in finance. We've talked about it, seven million bucks. We're gonna make a transition to Oracle for seven million bucks? And everybody says, well, you don't have any choice. You don't have any choice. You don't have any choice. We're gonna make other transitions that are gonna cost four, five million dollars, IT infrastructure. I'd like to say, no, blow it off. But guess what? When that IT infrastructure fails and people's property taxes are wrong, it's gonna cost more money.
That's time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Just a quick note on my end. I mean, what is the difference between the Health Department and Corrections, or Health Department, or not the Health Department, excuse me, I'm thinking, I'm trying to say the Health Center. The Health Center, where two hundred and fifty seniors and individuals with severe physical disabilities reside permanently. What is the difference between that and Corrections, or that and Sheriff's Office, et cetera? Differences, of course, as we know, Corrections, law enforcement is mandated. Health Center is not mandated. That doesn't mean I wanna get rid of it. I've always supported the staff that work there, teamsters, management. I've gone to visit the residents there, and there's people that have been there for decades, living there, and have nowhere else to go. It would be very difficult to find somewhere else to go for them. So, of course, at least me personally, I would not want to see even a cut to the Health Center, let alone it shut down. However, just for public information, what is the difference? Is that the Health Center is not mandated by state law for us to do as a function, as a service. Whereas- whereas sheriff's office and corrections and county attorney and county defender and funding the judges and staff, that is required of us. You could say, well, go slash 'em and make up money there. Well, okay, well, we can't say, when they're up here, hey, we are so proud of you and we are so happy to fund you, and all your resources that we give you are worthwhile, and yet, on the flip side, you know, say, go cut there because we wanna keep things like the health center. I mean, obviously, this is all an intricate, difficult balance, especially if we do see more financial pain in the future. Right now, you know, half our departments, more or less, are now facing a zero percent cap. What if next year, in the spring, the inheritance tax goes away and those seventeen to twenty million dollars go away? And then we're really, really talking about cuts, for sure, without a doubt, you know? So, this is why, you know, like I said, with the increases of cost of living, inflation, medical expenses to corrections, insurance premiums, et cetera, in the very small expected black, in the black balance. And that's assuming that we don't get the inheritance tax taken away from us. So, reasons being why I'm supporting a flat, stay the same levy for now. Commissioner Kavanaugh, third round, two-minute round?
The resolution amendment that I proposed is for four-tenths of a mil decrease. Just to point out, I agree that we have to make some choices every single year. The difference between the Douglas County Health Center and Douglas County Correction Center is eighty percent of the Douglas County Health Center is paid for by the federal government in the form of Medicare and Medicaid. Virtually 100% of the Douglas County Correction Center is paid for by property taxes. By far, the largest single amount of outside-of-Douglas-County money that we get for anything comes because of our Douglas County Health Center. This is a huge magnet for federal dollars for Douglas County. And we do the best work that we do helping Douglas County residents with that resource. A hundred percent of what we spend to lock people up is coming out of the property taxpayer's pocket. That's always overlooked when we're talking about, oh, we gotta cut things, we gotta cut things. Let's go to the health center. Let's cut our nose off despite our face. Not the one that we pay 100% through property taxes, but the one who we get 80% of federal subsidies from Medicare and Medicaid for. It just doesn't make any sense. Stop doing stupid stuff. If we cut waste and we recognize where the money comes from, we can do a lot better with a lot less property tax. And that's the basis of my proposal. Every year, we have challenges. Every year, we should have robust finance committee hearings, like the legislature does in appropriations, and like the Congress does in Ways and Means. We need to have a robust public discussion that's transparent, that is more than a twenty-minute item way down on the agenda that nobody is here for. So, I propose that amendment, Mr. Chairman, and I would ask that we have a vote on that.
I will get to that as soon as we close the hearing. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, but the fact that's not mentioned is, yes, you get money from Medicaid, but we subsidize the health center somewhere up to twenty million dollars. And so you take the subsidy that you have that we provide at twenty million dollars, you take a zero lid increase, you take a five percent deficit, and the eat that will happen with that eventually, it would be a matter of time before we have to make a hard decision. And, yeah, the majority of it is there, but that twenty million dollars means a lot, and it has slowed since I've been here, but it has not decreased. And there is going to be, if you have a lid that continues to grow in demand-wise and the cost over there continue to grow, you will never make that up. And so let me again reiterate the fact, I have no desire to close the health center. And I've sat in here in a room full of people where the board thought they may entertain that with the study, but didn't do it. And if we come to that point, it'll be a reckoning time for a lot of things. I don't know so much if the center will close, if we ever got to that point, but it would privatize. And when it privatizes, there's a whole nother beast there. There's a whole nother thing. So, yeah, it's seventy percent, but it's twenty million dollars of county money that's in there. And when we get to the point where you have to squeeze that, those increases, you have to squeeze the increases of the civilian workforce that come in there. We'll have reckoning time pretty soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this topic? Larry?
Larry Store, 501-Five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. On the topic of word salad, there's been a lot of that this last few minutes. The primary responsibility is to support, defend, and protect the Constitution of the United States, which people are not doing. Every day, we're being told time and time again that it's a democracy, and we need to do everything we can to help everybody. But when you do that, you're neglecting somebody else. Equality is the Constitution. We don't need all these laws to protect other people from this and some people from that. You're spending money on programs, a lot of them, that are recommended to you by 501(c)(3)'s from out in the hinterlands, out in Washington, D.C. somewhere, or community partners and 501(c) charitable organizations here, that because they have the hand in your pocket, they control your agendas. The Juvenile Justice Center, I remember. We didn't get to vote on that, and it's still not being used. And you can't do without my inheritance tax if I have anything left. I'm not going to have anything left because of your property tax. You're barking up the wrong tree on inheritance. You're not, it's not gonna be there. And that's the case with a lot of people. A lot of this is the fault because you do not allow two-way discussions in your civic centers. You're supposed to be listening to the people, but you do not. You refuse to discuss with us. In my last trip up here, I did not say anything about that resolution being a lie, that there was not factual. I did not say that, but my representative implied that I did. What I did say was the fact that she did that implies that you people are listening to the wrong people. What I'm telling you is, when you change everything inside, out, and around, and blame the rest of the people for not having black woman maternity equality, you've just accused everybody else of being bad people. That is what Marxism does, Maureen. Don't tell me that white people have all of the safety that there is because I know differently. But that's what you did, and you accused me of kinda being a liar. Well, this board has lied about a lot of things, including the Juvenile Justice Center.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
So, it's, healthcare is not pie, so we're not trying to share the same pie. The pie needs to be bigger. That's what I'm implying, so in response to that remark. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments during this public hearing? If none, I will now close the public hearing. As a courtesy, I'll take Commissioner Kavanaugh's motion since he tried twice during the hearing. Go ahead, Commissioner Kavanaugh, and then I'll get to Rogers.
It's simple. We amend the resolution where it says the property tax rate is remaining at, I believe it's 29.059, to reflect a four-tenths of a percent decrease, which would make it 28.659, I believe. That's correct.
There has been a motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Is there a second? If no second, we'll take other motions. Motion to approve, specifically keeping the levy as presented, all right? Second by Morgan. And we'll vote.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yep.
Teresa County Attorney's Office. Could we do it, I would just suggest, could it be as amended to make the correction to the statute in Exhibit B?
Oh, as amended per Teresa's correction.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Okay, there's been a second by Morgan. We'll vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. That completes the public hearing section. We'll now go into Section Six, committees.
The vote was, I believe, five commissioners voted yes, one commissioner voted no, and one commissioner was absent. Is that an accurate reflection of the vote?
Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, I mean, I usually don't announce for votes when someone's absent, but, yeah, obviously Commissioner Borgeson was absent.
Right, right. I just wanted the record to reflect the actual vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to committees, we have our budget report under Finance as presented. And then we do have a resolution under Community Services. By nature of the topic, there is a resolution to exempt windstorm debris hauled by the county engineer from their annual fifteen-hundred-ton allocation. We have Kent Holm.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. Briefly, this simply exempts the debris that was hauled as a result of the July 31st windstorm from their annual allocation of fifteen-hundred tons. And because there's a board resolution identifying that, that's why I'm bringing this to you today. That resolution simply exempts the tonnage that was delivered to Pheasant Point for that specific natural disaster. Happy to entertain any questions.
All right. Motion second for discussion. Motion by Rogers. Second by Friend. Any discussion on this item? If not, there's a motion to approve. Please vote.
Thank you. Motion passes, six to zero.
All right. Under Human Resources, we have Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented. We do have a need for executive session for the purpose of labor negotiations. With that, I'll take a motion. Motion by Rogers. Second by Morgan to go into executive session. Please vote. Yeah, it's gonna be upstairs.
Motion passes, six to zero.
Thank you. The board will now go into executive session for the purpose of labor negotiations. We will be meeting upstairs in room 903.